Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Bellefonte Borough Council Work Session. No action, including making motions or approvals, is taken during the work session. Tonight, we'd like to welcome Cindy Hahn from CNET.
Thank you very much. You may detect that my speech is a bit affected, a little slower. I did have a stroke last year, and so if you're detecting that, that's what you're hearing. If I say anything that you don't think you understood, please ask me to repeat it. At your seat tonight is the annual report for 2024 for you to enjoy. I do have your presentation here for you, some highlights of the year. Five hundred and twenty-seven programs were produced. I want to remind you of how small the staff is, four full-time and three part-time people. So five hundred and twenty-seven is a lot for seventy people to produce. We do now have seventeen member organizations. CADA joined last year, so the CADA board meetings are now covered by CNET. And we started in February of '24, closed captioning, which was an optional service for our members at a cost of $17 per hour. We thought that maybe four or five would sign on for the service, but it was really very successful, and currently fourteen of our seventeen members have opted into the captioning service. In 2024, the borough produced sponsored twenty-two programs, all of which were council meetings and work sessions. And of course, when you have a work session that is prior to your council meeting, all of that is considered one program or one meeting for you. So the twenty-two programs is essentially 4.2% of all of our programming in 2024. So in 2023, your percentage was slightly higher, but some of that is due to the fact that we have one more member. So when you have one more member, your programming is going to be slightly less than it was before. And this graph shows you what the past five years looks like in '20 through '24. Over the past five-year period, the borough sponsored 4.65 of our programs, again down just a little bit from the 2019 to 2023 period. These five years are important because our funding formula is based on your usage during a five-year period of time. So 2020 through 2024 will determine what your 2026 dues are. And here are all of the members over that five-year period of time with the red arrow pointing to Bellefonte Borough. I would say your programming is less than most of our municipalities, but that really does make sense, determining on your size and your population. The largest user of our services is State College Borough with Center County Government in second place. So a reminder of where to watch. Your council meetings and work sessions are televised Wednesdays at 9:30 p.m., Friday at 2:00 a.m. for those who cannot sleep, Saturday at 8:00 a.m. and Sunday at 4:00 in the afternoon. They are streamed live on YouTube and on cnet1.org. They are available on demand for a minimum of 12 months, and that's where the programs are, both captioned, and you'll find them indexed by agenda item. You can also find us on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire, and we have created little online tutorials about how to find us on each of those platforms. So you can watch those, and they will walk you through exactly how to find it on Roku or Apple TV. Now, the number of viewers on cable TV is something that I will never be able to provide to you. Comcast considers that data to be proprietary. However, your online viewers were seeing from January of '24 to March of '25 about 210 average viewers. Now, that is combined. I looked today to see if I could tell. I think that YouTube is responsible for about 70% of those, and 30% to cnet1.org. Very slightly, but that's overall in general. So you're seeing about 210 views per meeting. I wanted to just briefly touch on our candidate interviews. We produce them every year for both the primary and the general election. We do send invitations to everyone for a federal, state, or county office, as well as the townships and the boroughs. The interviews are conducted by local journalists, and we televise them on our channels, and they are available as well on CNET One. Good, I've come to the end. I will be happy to answer any questions anyone may have. No?
I have one.
Yeah?
So, and I know you mentioned that you can't get the numbers for the online or on the TV viewing.
Right.
What is the reason for that? I mean, I know you said it was proprietary, but wouldn't it be to their advantage to be able to sell that?
Sure.
To say, you know, you have so many viewers watching that and...
We have always thought so, but they choose different things that they decide they're going to share than other things. We have asked quite a few times, but unfortunately Comcast will not divulge.
And there's no advertising on your channel?
No.
Okay, because I was going to say if there was, they would probably have to divulge that.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
I think I can follow up a little bit with that. The contract with Comcast is a ten-year contract, correct?
Well, it's ten years with an automatic five-year extension. So for all intents and purposes, it's fifteen.
And that was done back in about 2016, 2017.
Correct.
And Ralph was on one committee, I was on a second committee, and we went through this over and over and over again, and we tried to get them to change. But we ended up giving up that in order to get some better funding and access, including the CNET listing of all of the programs, because they didn't want to give us either. So we took that instead of the numbers for the proprietary.
Yeah. We are one of the few PEG education government channels that they allow the program to be on the digital guide. Most stations, they just tell them no, but we were very persuasive, and they do allow us to be on the digital guide, which I think is very valuable. Yeah.
I just wanted to thank you for mentioning the PEG TV access option. You mentioned it, I think, last year. That is a great way to access the CNET recordings of just about anything that happens in the county, and you can go back typically a year, and they are all indexed. So if you're looking for something or you just want to get some information, it's a great resource.
Great, great, yeah, thank you. Okay, well, I want to thank you very much. Your support is much appreciated. We couldn't do what we do without the members that support us and fund us, so thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Cindy, very much. We are finished with the work session, and we will begin our business meeting at 7:30.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Balfont Borough Council Business Meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Clayton, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bernera is excused. Mr. Brackville?
Here.
Ms. Clayton, here. Ms. Dan?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
President.
Ms. McKean?
Here.
Ms. Purnell?
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Here.
Mr. Larson is excused. Ms. Beckley?
Here.
And Mayor Johnson is excused.
Thank you. Additions to the council meeting agenda. Under Act 65 of 2021, if a matter is not on the agenda, council may not take official action on it with the following exceptions. Council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to its agenda through a majority vote. The council must state why the action item is being added to the agenda. Council may vote to add an action item to this agenda.
I'd like to make a motion for the, to add, to add under the communications instead of no action. A proposed motion and second to support the Balfont Water Association to submit a grant application similar to the grant in 2025.
Thank you, Randy. Do we have a second, please? Thank you. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville?
Here.
Ms. Clayton, it's yes or no? Are you voting yes?
Yes.
It's early. Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else to be added to the agenda? Public comment. Balfont Borough, Borough Council intends to take public comment related to the motion that is on the floor after it has been duly made and seconded. The order of comment will be public comment and then council comment, including proposed amendments by council members. If amendments are proposed to the original motion, the public will then only comment on the amendments before final votes are taken. You must be a Balfont resident, nonprofit representative, business owner, or official representative of another governmental agency. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and street, municipality, if outside the Balfont Borough. Comments are limited to three minutes. Yes? I think we can just keep it under the communications. Will that work all right? Or do you want to move it?
It doesn't matter. So the council's wish.
Is everybody okay with it being in communications still? Great, thank you. Okay, under communications. Glenn Thompson, fiscal year 2026 appropriations form and deadlines. Could I have a motion and a second to approve the Balfont waterfront property to submit an application similar to the one done in 2025?
So moved.
Thank you, Joanne. We have a second, please? Thank you, Shawna. Is there discussion on this?
Just for the record, I, I just got the calls today from Teresa Sparassino and Delta Development and Tom Songer. So last year, they submitted an application for Dun, you know, the reconfiguration of, or rebuilding of Dunlap Street. This would be a similar application. It would be under Balfont Borough. And then in addition, they might want a support letter from us. It's due this Thursday, so this approval just allows them to take the same application that they processed last year and resubmit it again in 2026.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Community Development Block Grant, 2025 proposed schedule is in your packet. We will have more discussion on this as the meetings begin.
Yes.
Just a quick comment. The Suspension Bridge now has enough funding to completely be rehabbed and repaired, replace what parts. So what we should be considering are new projects, such as things like the stamped sidewalks and the replacement of the fencing behind the pergola in Tallyran Park, which is something that is in the Parks and Committee report. Because it's in really bad shape. But this is something we probably should be discussing at our May 19 meeting. So I hope had that on the agenda at that time.
Okay, thank you. The Journal of School Safety, SRO, treats students to the unique bus ride. There was information on this. Is there any comment or discussion? It was a nice article.
Why don't we tell the public what it was?
Pardon me?
Why don't we tell, have the chief tell what the article was about? To highlight one of his officers.
We can. Would you mind?
I don't think we, we can't now, chief.
I don't have it in front of me. But Officer Luce, who's one of our SRO officers at the middle school, set up a special day for a special student in the school where he had the Penn State bus come down and give him a ride. It was something very important to that child. And Officer Luce took initiative to set it up. And, and it made it into the, thank you. And it made it into the journal. We're extremely proud of him. And I know it made this student very happy on that day. So we commend him for doing nice things like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have the Tallyran Park Clap Song called "Earth is Home Video."
Are you guys going to play game on Sunday?
Yeah.
I feel like it's gonna be really hot.
Again?
I got my ticket for the long way round. New bottle for the day. And I sure would like some sweet company. I'm leaving tomorrow. What do you say? When I'm gone, when I'm gone. You're gonna miss me when I'm gone.
Wait. All the weather is just too much. We have to leave this planet better for all of us.
So this was, the CBICC came to us last summer and asked if they could use Tallyran Park to help as part of the Center County Parks to tape this. And we ended up being the highlight at the very end. And they released it on April 10th in anticipation of Earth Day, which is tomorrow. So we wanted the town council and the public to see this because I think it's a nice showcase of what we have here in town with our parks.
It is very nice, Joanne. It was nice to see that. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved, Brackville.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second, Clayton.
Thank you. Discussion? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports. The mayor will have his proclamation at our next meeting. We have our police report. Were there any questions or comments on the police report? We also have the parking report. On the Office of Community Affairs, the Planning Commission meeting on April 14th had to be canceled last minute due to there not being a quorum. The meeting has been rescheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, April 22nd at 6:00 PM in the large meeting room. Harb will meet tomorrow, April 22nd at 8:30 AM in the Oak Room. Mr. Holderman, you have a report for us. Did you want to add anything? Or make comments?
I have nothing to add unless there's anyone that has any questions with anything on the report.
Okay, thank you. Onto committee reports. Environmental and Parks Committee, that's Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Thank you. We, this report has been split into two sections. Has the, let me find my, where is it? Hold on one sec. Put it up and now I can't find it.
That's okay. Take your time.
The, since there are two very different issues, we decided to have the environmental issues to be reviewed on odd-numbered months and Parks and Rec on even-numbered months with all meetings held on the second Thursday of the month. Members of the committee are myself, Randy Backville, Rita Purnell, and Barb Dan is an ex-officio member. On the Parks portion, we met on April 10th. And we made the following plans. There's going to be a walkthrough of Tallyran Park by the Parks and Rec Committee and the Tallyran Park Committee on May 21st at 2025 at 4:00 PM to look for- Tallyran Park Committee on May 21st at 2025 at 4:00 PM to look for maintenance issues at the park. And then the following month, on June 12th, the Parks and Rec Committee will do a walkthrough for the rest of the parks, which we haven't done before, but we thought it was time that we started looking at those for maintenance issues as well. Julie Brooks is applying for some bare root trees in the fall, and we're going, she's going to be getting us a list of tree possibilities for both the parks and the right-of-ways, and we're looking to see what might fit best in there. There's an Air Force leadership group that is interested in doing something for the borough, and we, after reviewing possibilities, we are suggesting to them that they steel-brush, power wash the railings around Tallyran Park, and then paint as needed. There was like 30 or 40 of them that came in last year and finished their entire project within 30 minutes. So we think this might, might be a good project for them. We also talked about some possible grants for the parks. The one I already mentioned is possibly doing a CBDG or a Lowe's grant to repair or, and replace the wooden fence at the end of the pergola. And there's an ADA ramp that is being considered at the train station at Tallyran Park. Hoffman and Leakey have estimated the cost to be $90,000, and we are applying for a grant through the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau for that. The Tallyran Park Committee is discussing, is seeking volunteers to weed in the wildflower section of the peninsula between the Suspension Bridge and the Sculpture Garden. So if anybody wants to help out, contact the borough and we'll get you the contact information for Tally Fisher and, and the Tally... Yes, thanks. And finally, there is in your packet for this, an information on the Liberty Belt that wants to be placed at the train station. Regarding the Environmental Committee Report, we met on March 27th, and what we looked at for that meeting was the request by one of our community members to create an ordinance to prohibit pesticide spraying. After reviewing what's available at the state level and looking at other communities have done, we have made a decision to not recommend a pesticide ordinance at this time. However, we want the public to know that the state regulates the spraying of hazardous chemicals through the Department of Agriculture. And that they, we found out that all other communities in the state solely rely on the state enforcement. The law includes a required notification of any property owner with chemical sensitivities within 500 feet of the spraying to be notified if that person has signed up on the pesticide hypersensitivity registry. We are recommending that the borough place this application on our website so that people here in town can get hold of it and send it. You do need to reapply every single year. The first year, you have to get a doctor's certificate that you do have hypersensitivity. After that, you just fill out the first half of it, and it goes from there. The one problem with that is that the only people that need to be notified are property owners. So if you are a rent, if you're a renter and somebody notifies the owner, they don't have to notify their tenants. So there's not quite a complete protection of our tenants here in town. So we had a recommendation to help those out that we can do without doing an ordinance, and that is to have, when we spray in the right-of-way, following the same 12 to 72-hour pre-notification requirement that the Department of Agriculture requires, if we could post on our website that we're going to be spraying at, in the 200 block of North Springs Street on the right-of-way, people will have at least an attempt, if they rent, to be able to know that. The other suggestion that we didn't make any decision on, we wanted to bring to council, is to consider revising the property maintenance ordinance to require landlords and the borough to use the pesticide sensitivity registry to notify tenants when either the landlord or the borough applies pesticides when, within 500 feet. That was not on the agenda this evening, so I talked to Barb a little bit earlier, and I asked to have that placed on the next agenda for us for consideration as a motion. That's my report for the environmental parks. And we like, the pesticide registry thing was in your packet, is here at the table, so this is what it looks like.
One more for you, the ordinance.
Okay. The ordinance committee, hold on one second, let me grab that one. Come on, it was here. Committee reports, here it is. We have started work on ordinances. We preliminarily looked at the Belfonts ordinance and discussed what we should look at. We decided to review ordinance that the borough has either had questions about or that have come through the administration's work. Based on this discussion, we have selected the following ordinances to review this year. The air pollution ordinance to determine if it should be revamped or retired. The beekeeping ordinance. Matt Almond has asked us to review the refuse and recycling ordinance. The solar ordinance to look at the section to see if we need to revise the sizing of ground solar, ground-level solar installations to more accurately reflect the size of the property. And the zoning and planning ordinances. Gina Thompson has indicated these ordinance all need to be updated. Since the sign ordinance was approved for removal from zoning, zoning might be the actual first one that we should start reviewing and revising so that we have only one public hearing to do on that ordinance. So that's where we'll go next. And once we finish that, then we'll go to the others.
Okay, great. Thank you, Joanne, very much, and thanks to those committees.
Barb?
Yes.
I have a question for Joanne on that. We met with Jeff, our solicitor, last week, and he has the peddling and solicitation ordinance that he was working on, or he at least has it, and wanted to know from us whether or not to continue looking at it. So is that, that's not on this list, but do you want us to let him know?
Yes, go ahead and send that to us. We didn't know about that one.
Anything else for that committee? Okay, we'll move on to Finance and Administration. Ms. Clayton?
Thank you. The Finance and Administration Committee met on April 15th. Present were myself, Barb Dan, Joanne, Tosti Vacy, Shawna McKean, Johanna Sedgwick, and Don Holderman. And Don proposed some suggestions for updating the borough staffing that would result in full staffing for the borough prior to the hiring of a new borough manager. And one of the proposals was a job description for administrator for grants and special projects and activities, which would be a non-supervisory position but would be filled internally. He also suggested advertising for a part-time position to assist our finance director and post internally and externally for an opening in the, for Assistant Superintendent of Public Works. And then, per the request of Borough Council, on March 17th, our committee reviewed the grant-writing proposals from Delta Development, OnePlus Strategies, and Atlas, but with the position of administrator for grants to be filled internally, there's no need for us to outsource those services. And the committee reviewed the proposal from Keystone Municipal Solutions to proceed with the search for borough manager, and the committee is recommending that council approve engage, the engagement agreement. The committee will next meet on May 20th at 5:30 in the Oak Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Debbie, and your committee. Infrastructure and Public Works Committee, Mr. Brackville.
Jump off here real quick. I have the Center Region Council of Governments Public Safety Committee meeting minutes, so this is at the table. If you have questions, usually call the COG, because they have most of the information there.
Okay, thank you.
With infrastructure, and the Belfont Borough Building's ADA issues, 301 North Springs Street and East Lamb Street requested Matt Almond to meet with his electricians to review and enhance brighter lighting over the front steps of the North Springs Streets and over the entry door on East Lamb Street. Also, with the new location to the borough building, street parking needs to be addressed as, according to ADA, along with providing a crosswalk from the Police Department, the Public Works, and parking lot side block across the street. I had asked Matt to take a look at that, and so did Julie, and he sent us back some issues that he was concerned about, and what, as Matt says, "I've had, I've reviewed your requests, and I have some questions. Well, style, what style of the lighting are you proposing for the entrances, for the armory building? Keep in mind, whatever style you pick will need to be approved by Harb. Once you have a style of light picked out, I can get the cost to install them." The crosswalk request would be, from the employee parking lot to the armory building can be done. It just seems, it just, it just not seemed to size, what the hell does that say? It just seems to be justified, and the crosswalk should require us to remove four parking stalls, install an ADA curb ramp on each side of the street, install signage and lighting, and to avoid, just to avoid 150 feet for the nearest crosswalk. That estimate would have been $15,000 to complete just for the crosswalk. So, I talked to Matt this afternoon, and I understand where he's coming from with the location of the crosswalk and the issues that it does to still cause issues for ADA folks, but we talked briefly about the first two parking stalls out here on the hill here, the last two on this side of the street. We can make those handicap, and hopefully that would allow somebody who needs that to be closer to getting out of the car and getting onto the sidewalk. The other thing with the lighting, I think, I think I had him confused about changing all the lights, but we just wanted to up the size of the light to have it brighter out there on both entries. So we're gonna, we'll take a look at that and review it again, I guess, in the next meeting. That's all I have. Thanks, Julie, for helping me out today. Good to go. So these minutes, these will have to go into the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Randy. Thanks to your committee. And Mr. Johnson with the Streets Committee.
We have nothing to report.
No, just joking.
Just joking. Well, you all had it in your packet tonight, so I'll start at the top, McAllister Street, East High Street stop sign. We had a request from a resident there, so Julie was kind enough to find the report that was in November of 2013. There were some recommendations of some additional signage. First, I'm sorry, let me back up. We met on April 8th, myself, the chair, Doug Johnson, Deb Clayton, Rita Purnell, were there. The staff present was Matt Almond and Julie Brooks. The first topic was the McAllister Street, East High Street, is there a possibility of a four-way stop there? So we talked about it for a while, and we reviewed Mark Hood's previous report. That one recommended some signage. All of the signs were not put in place. Matt Almond agreed to install those signs now. And we talked about adding the, what do we call that, chief speed detection device, traffic count device? Yeah. So we contacted Chief Whitmer. His staff put that in place. It's now working and collecting data for Mr. Hood. Julie contacted Mark Hood. He did have some free time last Friday, but it was a holiday for borough staff. So we're in touch with him again to reschedule his visit. His visit and evaluation comes to the borough free of charge. So those are the steps we are taking at the moment, and once we have the data collected from the radar and Mr. Hood reevaluates the intersection, I think the Streets Committee will meet again, and with the chief's help and the committee and borough staff, we'll come up with a recommendation for that intersection. So that was one thing. The other one was the Dollar Store loading and unloading area. You all know that. Dollar Store is at the corner of South Spring and West Bishop. After some discussion with staff, Matt and Julie, Rita, myself, and Deb, we concluded that we would give it a try to use the already painted yellow curbing on the south side of West Bishop for the loading and unloading area. Matt, Matt thought that it was possible for the trucks to back into there and unload and load. I'm gonna ask any other members, Deb or Rita, do you remember any more comments about that yellow curb? The consensus was the trucks could get into there, that I recall, any?
I think it was a practical solution, because it gets the trucks off the street, out of traffic, and they're not blocking line of sight and creating a hazard, and they'd be close to the entrance of the Dollar Store.
I just didn't want to miss any comments that I might have missed. So Matt's going to sign that, and I'm going to ask borough staff to contact Dollar General Management and let them know that we're going to recommend that as the loading and unloading area. Yes, Joanne?
Was there any discussion about limited times for loading and unloading?
We, we did, yes, but we didn't come up with a conclusion. That is something that, we did discuss that, as I recall, but we didn't recommend a time. That's a good idea. Any, any recommendations on that?
I think you may, your times might be okay, it might not be a big issue. So what I'm concerned about is if they, when they come to drop off a delivery or pick it up, which either one, are they backing in or are they pulling?
I would think they would back in.
And then that way, that puts, that puts the stuff they have in the back, they've got to go all the way back to the back of the truck and then bring it all the way back to the front to get in, just throw it out there.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm sure downtown New York City, they carry it a lot further than that.
They usually just go forward.
So, Chief, do you, do you have any recommendation on loading and unloading time there that we could, I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot. If you have any thoughts on that, I'd appreciate it.
So I think the issue was, because I've spoken to Dollar General, it's the delivery companies come and go as they please. So it's hard to know when they are going to show up.
Yes.
So I think what we'd probably have to do is reach out to these companies or get a list and see, because we have to stop them coming during rush hour in the mornings. That seems to be when they're there, they're blocking the whole lane.
Yep.
And that's creating the problem. So I think maybe reaching out to Dollar General to get a list of their companies that are coming in there and see if we can prevent something.
Right.
Come either earlier or after 9:00 or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I suggest.
Okay. Can we have somebody take care of that? Dawn?
I was just gonna say, if you recall, we talked about times a little bit and thought that we would see if this, parking them in a different area helped with that, and then proceed to times.
Okay.
If it, if it didn't help.
Okay.
So that, that was the consensus on that.
Okay.
So, but, but that is a very good suggestion on the times, on finding the times that way.
As long as this fixes the problem, I'm fine with that. If it doesn't, then I think we should look at the time limits.
So my question was, you're having them pull up through West Logan, or are they backing up West Logan?
I was understanding it as they were backing up in there.
So the front of the tractor will be facing east, is that what you're?
Yes.
So that's gonna create a traffic issue in itself, because they're gonna have to come up on Logan and back up, and then coming down the hill on Spring Street is gonna create a safety issue.
We talked about that, Chief, and it takes one time for the truck driver to decide, oops, I went the wrong... "Oops, I went the wrong way, and maybe I should pull in," but you're, you're right. I don't know, I don't know if it's the same driver each time.
Yeah. There really isn't a, the best solution here because it's just where it is, so-
Yeah, yeah.
I think we should just do what we're planning on doing, see how it works out.
Okay. Dawn?
I, I know, we brought, the last time that we discussed this, we, we talked about having a timeline in the morning from, say, six to nine AM, taking the, you know, the handicap parking space in front of Bell Market, and from there, that line up, the truck would park up against the curb on-
Spring Street.
Spring Street, rather than, I just remember the discussion about backing up into beside Dollar General. I mean, once they open and there's cars parked in there, it's gonna be a nightmare.
It is.
We, we, we discussed that with Matt, and he seemed to feel that the yellow curb currently painted was the, was the, worth a trial. Am I recalling something different, or?
No, I, we, yes, you're correct, exactly. That was, I think, because it's that way now, it might be worth a try, rather than taking, losing some parking spaces to the side, so.
Yeah. So, we thought we'd give it a try, see how it works out.
Doug, I have, I have a question, just so I'm clear on this. Where they're backing up into is the side of Dollar General.
No, it's the side of Napa. Currently, the curb is painted yellow.
Okay, on that side, so there's still parking?
It would be the south side of West, yes.
Okay. So, I'm not a-
So, they would come up if we were-
I'm not a truck driver.
For me, yeah.
If you're coming up Spring Street in front of Dollar General-
Right.
-you're gonna have to go past that intersection and then back up, or you're gonna have to turn left onto Bishop Street.
Probably turn left and then back in, yes.
And back up. I, I can only speak from experience there. It is very difficult on Spring Street if you're turning left onto Bishop Street, because those cars come around that corner, it's a blind corner. So, I have some real concerns about that. I appreciate the problem, because it is a problem, but I, I would not go forward with, with that like it is. That is just my opinion on that.
If, if, if that's the way they plan to enter, it's still, they would, if they would come from West Bishop through the intersection of South Spring and pull up to the yellow curb with the back of the truck at the corner of Spring and Bishop, they still would need a flagger to back out.
Right. That's correct.
We, we were trying to avoid, because of the inconsistency of what we assumed was the inconsistency of the deliveries at Dollar General, not blocking the ADA handicap parking space. That's fine. We can go as far as telling Dollar General, "Deliveries only from six AM until nine AM," and let them deal with the deliveries.
Yeah, I think, I think that seems like a good solution, but it does, as a businessperson who doesn't get big deliveries like that, but I do, it is very unpredictable with deliveries, and I, I think part of our job is to not make this difficult for businesses to do business. I don't know what the right answer is, but I do have a lot of concerns, and I appreciate all your thoughts into this. Is it possible to, just in front of Dollar General, that's just blocked for trucks, and that's it? And, and I know we're gonna lose a parking space or two.
Well, that's where the, that's where the handicap space is at this time.
Well, then, could we, could we move that?
We can.
You wouldn't have to lose it. I mean, you might, at the most, lose it for an hour if you have delivery time, so-
Right.
You know, parking, actually, paid parking begins at eight AM, so if you, if you had the delivery barb until nine o'clock, for example, you'd only be losing an hour.
Right. If, if they could do that, like I said, I just think that, as a businessperson who doesn't always get predictable deliveries, and it doesn't sound like they do either, I don't want to make it more difficult for them to do their business. They certainly, they have a very, they're a very important part of our community.
All businesses are, yeah.
It's a challenge.
It is a challenge.
If I may, we did talk about having Mark Hood take a look at that as well-
Yes.
-and then we can contact Dollar General and get some information from them to, to see what works best for them.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, so, go ahead, Chief.
Is there enough room in front of Napa to pull a truck there? I don't know what the measurement is, but I was wondering if, if we set that aside.
Right. So, that's a very good question. Once it's unloaded, I think you have the same dilemma, where the truck can't go down Stony Batter and unlikely will take one forty-four.
You're right. That's restricted when you get out on-
Yeah. It's just, it's a tough one. But, I'm sure, Barb, you are right, that the, the solution is to pull in front on South Spring, where the, we'll lose three spaces probably temporarily.
Yeah, figure, figure.
Ideally, that's the best spot. What they have been doing is heading north on Spring and parking there and jamming traffic up.
Yes.
So, well, I'm open for any suggestions, you know, and Julie is right. Mark, as soon as we get in touch with, with him and he commits to looking at McAllister, we were going to take him down to that intersection and look at it as well. So, if you want to give it some thought and make another recommendation, we're certainly willing to listen.
Doug, if you're, if the driver's pulling in, so that the stuff being taken off is gonna be down by the doorway.
Well, tell me what street you're on first. If the driver's pulling into what street?
Right beside the, not the dealership, but the-
Napa.
Napa.
Okay.
Napa would be here, the truck would be here.
Yes.
So, is there enough room to go up around and come back out?
There, there is, but that's private property, and it's signed, no trucks permitted.
That's the other problem, so that's why I'm saying, if, a lot of times you'll see, I've seen them come down, let's see, I'm trying to remember now, I think they pulled down through Bishop Street, made a right, and then-
Now, right onto Spring?
And then, yeah, yeah, and then they come back and back it up into the-
Yeah, I, I think it's been done.
Moves them back farther, but that's the way it is.
I think that's, I think that's why Matt was making that recommendation, because they have done that before. Do you, do you recall that, Deb or Rita, that conversation?
I do, yeah.
And I've seen trucks pulled in parallel to Napa also.
Okay.
So, it is possible to get in and out of there, but it is a maneuver, and it's a very busy intersection.
Do they have cones with them?
Do they have what?
Cones.
Usually not.
No, but that's where you would, you would-
That's something that should be required, I think, too.
You would hope an employee would come out and flag traffic if needed. I don't want to put a burden on our police staff to be there.
You mean, sometimes the only employee in Dollar General.
Well, how about this, we'll, we'll take another look at it. Chief, give it some thought. Julie and Matt, all of council members, if you come up with a more, a better idea, we'd love to hear it. In the meantime, maybe we should have a conversation with the management at Dollar General and see if they have any thoughts of restricting hours of loading and unloading. That seems like it would be an ideal solution. Is that okay?
I think that's great, Doug.
Okay. So, moving on, let's see, the intersection of Parkview Boulevard and Bishop, thank you, Dawn, for your comments in your report. I can go over that as well. The only change that we talked about during that meeting was their adding a street light, and we were, as Dawn said, waiting for final costs for that and approval by the engineering team, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pendot said that they would have it, maybe in thirty to forty-five days, the drawings would be finalized.
And, we, the, the Bishop Street and the Airport Road intersection, we, we don't have, it's an independent project from, from our project, so we can have input, but we have no control over that resolution. So, then we went on to the Borough Streets paving list, and I'll name them for you, no particular order. South Spring Street, Oak Street, and Dawn, I've forgotten where Oak Street is. I have the map in my folder. Do you remember where Oak Street is?
Ask Julie, she put the RFP out.
That's okay, we'll find it. Oak Street.
Oak Street.
Where is it?
Oak Street.
Oh, oh, okay.
That makes sense.
Okay. So, that, the Oak Street and West Lamb Street, that brings us to almost ninety thousand dollars plus. And, then, on East Lamb Street, near the cemetery, about the last one hundred yards of East Lamb, there's some pretty bad potholes, so Matt thought he could squeeze that in and still be under budget of a hundred thousand dollars, which is typically what our annual streets paving budget is. And then there was another item, storm drain for Locust Lane, that's in progress. Matt could probably give you a lot more details than that. I've read it over. There's, there was some drainage problems on Locust Lane, and Matt and the Borough Staff recommended coming down Locust Lane with a new storm drain, and it seems to make the most sense. Julie, do you have any thoughts on that, or have you been involved in that? I, I'm not sure that you have been.
Yes, I was, I was at the onsite meeting, so, yeah, we were just, instead of routing under as it is now, we wanted to get, take that out of the equation and route completely around that building, so this will never be an issue again, which is certainly a wise choice. So, we need to get an easement next to the building there to have that space to reroute and then connect.
Yes. So, are there questions about that project?
Just to clarify, this is the one where the storm drain went underneath the garage-
Yes.
-and it flooded and caused problems with the guy's property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then, we had some conversation about some motorcycle parking on North Spring. As a group, we decided it wasn't worth pursuing at this time. Our next committee is May, committee meeting is May thirteenth. It's, it's the second Tuesday of each month at four PM in the Oak Room. That's all the report I have for today.
Thank you, Doug, very much, and thanks to your committee. Okay, we will move on to liaison reports. They are all in your packet. Julie, did you have anything to add to, I always get this wrong, B I A, B I C C, your, your report?
No, just to draw attention to that the chamber was going to do a small thank you for the Garden Club and the people that keep all of our planters and everything so beautiful. So, in the report, we have the date that we're planning to do that in June, so it'd be great if we had some council members out there for that as well, because we do appreciate the, we all appreciate our volunteers for the Garden Club, so.
They do a great job. Thank you very much. Ms. Clayton from the library, do you have anything to add or comment on?
It's fine.
Okay. And, Mr. Brackbill, workplace safety, anything you wanted to add to your report?
I don't have anything for safety, but I do have a report anyway. The Bellefonte Fire Department Executive Committee was canceled in March. Center of Region Council of Governments, I didn't, didn't receive the minutes from that until this morning, or this morning, I actually sent her an email on Friday, and she sent it to me Monday. And I'm still trying to figure out why, why that's happening, and I think, Dawn, sometimes your name was on that list to get the, the minutes, I believe. I've seen it there a couple of times. It's not a big deal, but they're easy to work with, and so it's not that bad. Civil service, I'm, I'm doing that monthly as we do it, instead of doing, you know, picking one, and it just takes too long, I'd rather do it on a monthly, I don't say okay with Bill, because we never know when he's coming at us, so, go from there. And that's it, but I get really bothered when I look on here sometimes and I, and I see what, where I should have submitted, and I rarely see it anymore, and so I'd like to find out what's going on.
Okay.
And I don't think it, I don't think it's COG, because that should be coming somewhere. I may talk to Pam again this week and see what she can do, and if she can just send it to me, that'd be fine.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, moving on to current and old business, we need approval of ordinance number zero four zero seven two zero two five dash zero one, amendment to Chapter one oh eight in the Police Department. Could I please have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance?
So, moved, Clayton?
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second, correct it.
Thank you, Randy. Is there any discussion on this?
Just a question. I know some ordinances require public hearing, some of them don't. This one's one that doesn't. Is that correct?
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Could we have a rule call vote, please?
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
We also have an approval of ordinance number zero four zero seven two zero two five dash zero two, amendment to Chapter four eighty-two, solid waste. Could I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance?
So, moved, Clayton?
Thank you.
Second, McKean.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Yes.
I would like to suggest that we move this entire thing to the ordinance committee, because I understand the change in language under Part B, but on Part A, it needs to be completely updated. It just says compostable materials, and it's really yard waste collection. That whole section needs to be updated, the dates are slightly off, and it still refers to bundling brush and putting it to curbside for pickup, which is not currently accurate.
You can still bundle, if you have, if you cut limbs and everything, as long as they're in six-foot increments, and you bundle them, the Borough will pick those up, Deb, it's, it's not just what fits in the container, but-
Okay, because there's no reference to the brush containers in that first section? I'm not sure when this was written, but it seems to me that it was written before we had the, those ninety-gallon containers available.
It was around the same time, because everything was done at the same time.
Yes.
It's in there. I thought it was three feet, but. I, I would suggest that you approve the ordinance at this point, just because this deals with payment, and we need to, it, it doesn't match up, but I would also agree with Deb if she wants to, you know, send that over. I think it's already on the list.
It's part of reference.
Yes, it's part of reference.
It's part of the list, so you can look at that whole ordinance further.
Okay, thank you.
So-
Joanne?
A couple of questions, and they're all kind of related. I thought the annual brush can fee covered the cost of brush pickup. Is this not true?
Initially, the, the thought was, we didn't really even charge at all for brush or grass, but over time, you know, the whole program became overwhelmingly popular, so we are up to about approximately a thousand of our customers or residents use brush and grass, so, and then when we, we got to the point where we couldn't separate, because the truck itself was driving around all over, you know, twice a day, so the cost that, the cost that we're incurring now, Joanne, is just the cost of the, what it's taking to run the program.
Okay. So, if this additional fee is, is, and would this fee be only for people who have brush cans or for everybody?
This is only for people that have a brush or grass container.
So, why aren't we just increasing the cost of renting the brush can each year, and instead, we're creating a second fee, which, in my opinion, is going to be very confusing, because I've already paid for my brush can, now why am I having to pay for more? If it was all combined into one fee to maintain the cost of what we need to do, I think that would be a better idea than trying- I think that would be a better idea than trying to do it as two separate fees. That's almost like people talking about...
I don't know if that's right with what you're thinking, Joanne. When I first bought them, it was $30, and then it went to 60? 60 for two, I guess. Maybe it's still $30.
No, I think it's $25 a season for one container.
Right.
If you have two containers, it's $50.
But why would we be charging the same people two fees?
You're not.
You're not.
Okay, I don't understand then. What is this, please explain to me.
The fee, the fee, the $25 fee is for the, every Wednesday that the truck is coming around and picking up grass or brush and taking it. That's what you're paying for.
And what is this new fee for then?
It's just, it's not a new fee, it's just an increase. And what happened is, Joanne, that we had the number in the ordinance. We wanted to take the number out of the ordinance so that we could just put it in the fee schedule so that every year at the end of the year, when you all change your fee schedule, we can just make a blanket change to the fee schedule and it, because it didn't match up with the ordinance.
Okay. So let me see, so what you're saying is this is an ordinance, a revision to the ordinance to remove the fees from the ordinance so they can be put into the fee schedule and it will just have one fee paid?
Correct.
That I'm fine with. Has I read it, that's not what I understood.
I'm just sorry we took so long to get around to it, but that's, you hit the nail on the head right there.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have one thing on the new part of the ordinance too. Should we also have the service dates in that?
I know, I'm positive in that ordinance, and I haven't read it, the whole thing, in a while, but I'm positive that it states in the ordinance that brush and grass are picked up on the first Wednesday in April and that the last day is the week before Thanksgiving. I think we have that somewhere, Barbara.
Okay.
It is.
Yep.
That's under letter A. That's what we have it. That I was recommending.
And it also...
Yeah, but we, we actually go longer than October 31st. We've been doing it until the third week in November.
Okay, so should, are we just going to not put dates in there then?
I think, I think when the, I think when the, you know, the ad hoc committee is looking at this, they can revise it because we've done it now, we've done it this way every year. So it would be okay to put it in there for people to know.
And to answer Deb's question, in our website, brush must be bundled in four-foot lengths or less. There will be no charge for this type of special collection unless it's an excessive amount.
Oh, okay.
That's usually when you have these windstorms that blow limbs down and people that don't even have a brush or grass container can still do cleanup work.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Cletton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti-Vasey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're right here. We wanted to know who's second and who, do you remember who's second? Sean at the end. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have Keystone Municipal Services Engagement Agreement for Recruitment Services for Bellefonte Borough. Could I have a motion and a second to improve the engagement agreement for Recruitment Services for Bellefonte Borough? Thank you, Joanne. Can I have a second? Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Cletton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti-Vasey?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a memo. No council action is requested. The selection of Laurel Asphalt for our stamped crosswalks, that selection has been made.
So for the public's edification, where will these stamped sidewalks be placed?
If it hasn't changed, it would be High and Allegheny. No, High and Spring. And then the crosswalk on Cherry Lane, both sides on Spring, South Spring, right there in front of the VFW. And then West Bishop and Spring, that intersection there. So I think all in all, it's what, four, eight, about 10 crosswalks we're talking about. And that will be done around simultaneously when the, when that project is repaved.
Under new business, we have information on the bill proposed for Tally Ram Park. That was in your packet. Any questions or comments on that? No council action is required. Okay, recommendations to the Planning Commission to limit the number of adult-oriented businesses in the commercial district.
So moved, Brackbill.
Is there a discussion on this?
I think it's a good idea to try to look at it because we're just getting inundated with these things. I think there's two on every block at this point. And it's a little ridiculous that there's anyone pulling in there.
Anybody else have comments on that? I have a little bit of a comment here too. I have talked to other council members and residents are concerned about certain businesses in downtown and also the number of businesses that appear to be the same business. I spoke with Gina Thompson and this, she recommended to me that we ask the Planning Commission or direct them to research some of the possibilities. I know there's things that you cannot do, but there also are some things we may be able to do. Some of those may include some distance zoning where you can only have so many certain businesses within a mile radius or whatever. Also, she would like to review the language in the ordinance regarding adult-oriented businesses. And also there may be a possibility of being able to limit the number of like businesses. So she asked me to do it this way, so it can go to the Planning Commission and that way they can move that up since it is coming from council.
Ms. President?
I'm sorry.
What I'm concerned about too is these all have to be, the ones that are in here now are going to be grandfathered in.
That is correct.
And that's where we've got to kind of stop it right there.
That's...
This is all we're doing. And just try to just get them out of the way.
Yes, I agree.
My concern with the businesses we're referring to and the type of business is the signage that's in the windows.
Yes. And I know Gina is working on that to make everything be compliant and look as good as possible downtown.
It's beginning to look a little bit like a stinkers.
With their good entertainment. Is there any other discussion on this? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Cletton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti-Vasey?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now have council member comments for the good of the order. Johanna will start on your side today.
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you.
I just want to say for the public, I'm getting a lot of phone calls and everything, so I just ask for patience. I will get back to everybody, you know, as soon as I'm in the, once I'm in the office and get things, you know, situated, try to get back to everyone that has left me messages.
Great, thank you. I walked along the waterfront, quite often I do that, and all the trees that are planted there, every one of them is starting to bloom and it looks so nice and they all made it through the winter. So it's really nice. Go walk there if you would like to. Ms. Cletton?
Yes, I just wanted to mention since it's getting nicer out and we're getting a lot of better, nice warm weather, there's an increase in foot traffic throughout town in the residential neighborhoods and downtown. So if you're traveling on wheels, whether it's four or two or whatever, please be conscious of increased foot traffic around you. And for the benefit of yourself and your family, if you're on two wheels, please wear a helmet.
Tomorrow's Earth Day. Take care of the planet.
Ms. McLeary, do you have anything tonight?
I just wanted to say my apologies for being out recently to the council. I've had a very hectic past couple of weeks, but I'm here now and I'm happy to finally made it, so. Yeah, thank you.
We're glad you're here. Thank you very much.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn, please?
So moved, Brackbill.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned, 8:36.